We are recording, so.
I was thinking we'd set up additional meetings for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday while I'm still here.
Good afternoon and welcome to the April 6th meeting of the Needham Select Board. I'm Mo Handel, Board Chair. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Anything shared or stated will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available at the town's website, www needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. This particular meeting will not include public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present. Mary Ann Cooley.
Here.
Dan Matthews.
Here.
Matt Borelli.
Present.
John Bullion.
Here.
Thank you. As a first order of business, I would ask for a motion that this meeting will be continued to the board's next meeting of Wednesday, April 14th. If a technical problem develops, may we have a motion?
So move second.
Need discussion on the motion? Ms. Cooley.
I.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Borelli.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion.
I.
The chair votes I, the eyes have it. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the sale of bonds and notes. And present for that is David Davison, Assistant Town Manager for Finance, and Evelyn Poness, Town Treasurer Collector. David, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As noted, Evelyn Poness is joining us. So, Mr. Chair, the treasurer and I are coming before the board to ask the board to approve the sale of bonds. The bonds were for financing several projects which are currently underway, most notably the Public Safety Building Complex, which is the largest portion of the bond issue, as well as costs associated with Public Works Infrastructure and the Public Works Storage Facility, also known as the Jack Cogswell Building. In addition, we sought the board's approval to investigate the opportunity to refunding bonds or effectively to refinance outstanding debt to secure lower debt cost without extending the life of the loans. The board approved the action back on February 23rd, and we're pleased to report that the refunding portion of the bond issue is resulting in a savings of 9.7% to the town and conversely to the taxpayers of Needham. We also have a short-term ban bond anticipation note, which is financing a number of projects. Most of it is closeout costs, but some of it relates to projects that are now underway that due to due to COVID-19, other projects that were anticipated to be further along and are not are not resulting in debt payments. So we were able to pay down other projects quicker than was planned. The ability of that, the benefits of those movements is one, lower interest expense for the projects, and two, greater flexibility in the out years. And that ban for just under $730,500 will mature on June 15th, 2021, which will be paid off in full. So, Mr. Chair, those are the two instruments that we're asking the board to approve. Also, as a result of the favorable, continued favorable interest rate market, we saw a premium that resulted in the ability to reduce the amount of principal the town had to borrow, most notably again for the Public Safety Project by almost $1.6 million. And that's $1.6 million less in principal because it's a debt exclusion that the taxpayers will have to pay. So again, it is a savings for the board. We did meet prior to the sale of the bond and prior to the sale of the note. We extended and paused. We provided you their summary. But basically, they reaffirmed the town's AAA rating. They still see Needham as stable, but they did add a word of caution in terms of future flexibility. They have noted that we are conservative in our use of reserves and therefore we're in a better position to meet COVID-19 expenses that have been incurred to date based upon actions that we have taken and anticipated COVID-19 expenses that may have to be addressed in the fall of 2021. And with that, Mr. Chair, if the town treasurer has additional comments to add, I would ask her to say, and she said no. And, Mr. Chair, there are 12 motions before the board, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one question, Dave. We've had this before. Will one motion cover this that would reference the packet that went out to the public on notice?
Mr. Chair, yes, because the agenda fact sheet was posted on the town's website and available and is available for remedy to see one could move all 12 motions as printed on the back sheet.
Thank you very much, Dave. Are there any questions or comments before we move to a motion? Mr. Bullion, you raised your hand.
I prepared to offer a motion when you're ready.
Does anybody have any questions or comments before we have a motion? Hearing none, we come to Mr. Bullion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that the Select Board support in the Agenda Fact Sheet, Motion A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L, motions that are in the Agenda Fact Sheet, and I offer that as a motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Mr. Borelli seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you, Dave, and the staff and the team and Evy for this forward-looking financial plan that we have. You're here with S and P talking about COVID expenses. And I know we, as a community, look forward to that and talk about sustainability and trying to not be in the ups and downs and be able to handle things that are thrown our way. So I just want to give kudos in the savings that you just spoke about at this time. So all great news and look forward to continuing in the future. So, thank you.
I think we can all add our thanks to that. Are there any other questions or comments before we take a vote?
Well.
Dan.
Yeah, basically just to say the same thing, but it really, we go through the issuing of millions of dollars of bonds and notes and the financial reviews and the different obligations and elements that take a tremendous amount of work. And we do it in the space of a few minutes, but it's worth just a pause to say this all is able to be done because of both of the work of the entire town staff that makes it possible to assemble all the data and information and provide the results that provide the support for the favorable bond ratings. And then the work of Dave and the finance and every, Evy and everybody associated with the finance staff that gets this done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, do you want to add anything?
I already gave a thumbs up. I'm good.
Great.
Thank you.
That brings us to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes.
Matt Borelli.
Yes.
John Bullion.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Evy. Very much appreciate your work.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Mr. Red Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley.
I.
Dan Matthews.
I.
Matt Borelli.
I.
John Bullion.
I.
And the chair votes I. That's unanimous. Thank you. The motion is adopted. Kate, that disposes of this item. Kate, do you want to introduce the next item on our agenda, which is the Town Classification Compensation Study?
I would like to introduce Rachel Glisberg to introduce the topic when she gets on.
Okay.
Hi, Rachel. Rachel, would you?
Apologies, everyone. I was having some technical difficulties here. I apologize.
Great.
No need to apologize.
Would you introduce Chuck and Joelle and kick off this item for us?
Sure, absolutely. So, thank you for having us this evening. The town just conducted a townwide classification and compensation study. And so with us this evening is Chuck Murphy Ronbeletti, the Assistant HR Director for the town, and Jo Ellen Catamatory, and she is with Gov HR. And she was the vendor that worked with us very closely on this project. And we have Joelle in here this evening to present the final report to the Select Board. So with that, I will turn it over to Joelle.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, and good evening. It's really good to be at this point in the study. I want to just overall thank the town staff for all of their hard work on this. We started the study a while ago. Obviously, COVID got in the way, but we worked diligently and the staff was terrific. And we cannot do our work without the cooperation of the town staff, so especially Rachel and Chuck. But really, everyone participated, and we're really very much appreciative of that. So I am going to share my screen with you and pull up the PowerPoint. Okay. So I'm going to go do an overview of the study. So it's a pretty high level. There's a lot of detail in the report. When I do talk about some of the tables, which really is the meat of the report, it brings together the classification and compensation piece. I will let you know what pages I'm referring to in the report, whether you're looking at an electronic copy or a printed version. So tonight, these are the items that I will highlight for you. I will talk about the scope of work that we were asked to perform for the town of Needham, the job evaluation process that we went through that included the town employees, the proposed classification plan that we've developed. And we actually have two, one for managers and nonrepresented employees and one for union employees. The salary information that we gathered and analyzed for the compensation side of the study and the development of that plan, again, both for managers and nonrepresented and union employees, and then how the town would implement this going forward. There are specifics that the town is working on. I'm just going to tell you generally how it would be implemented and then how the town can administer the plan in the future. If the town does administer the plan, both on the classification side and the compensation side, it will last for a long time, at least five to 10 years, if not longer. But there is that annual review and just refinement possibly on the classification side and then, of course, looking at compensation every year. And then just talk about any questions that you have with regard to the presentation or the report. So as far as the scope of work is concerned, we started with some project meetings to talk about the study, to talk about the different components of the study, as well as the town's expectations. So we did that upfront. We also requested a lot of information from the town. We needed job descriptions. We needed salary information. We needed organizational charts. So there was a lot of information that we requested upfront, and then we had some conversations. The next thing that we did was we went through an analysis to determine communities that we thought would be comparable to Needham to request salary information from. So we went through that analysis and presented that to the town, and we agreed on a list of communities. And that analysis is actually in the report as Appendix B, but I will go through it in a little bit more detail. Then I came on site and had several meetings with the employees to talk about the study, to talk about the classification side of the study, what it was, what it was not. Now, we were looking at your classification plan. We weren't looking at efficiency or staffing or performance or anything like that. It was truly a look at the positions and whether or not they were classified appropriately in the town. So I came on site and explained that to the employees, disseminated some information for them, the job analysis questionnaire, as well as just a summary of the different components of the study. And then we asked the employees to get to work on looking at their job descriptions and filling out our questionnaire. So that was a very important piece of the study because it's important for us to know how Needham completes its work. You know, you have neighboring communities. They have similar positions, but there are nuances to positions in different communities. So it's really important for us to work with the town employees to understand how you do your work in Needham. We then gathered a lot of salary information from the comparable communities. We analyzed that. We looked at a lot of their data, as well as collective bargaining agreements, and pulled all of that into the study. And then we provided the draft of the final report that was presented to the town. We made some final edits, and what you have before you this evening is the final report. So the first part of the study talked about job evaluation, and we looked at 134 positions across the town. And our job evaluation system has nine factors, and every one of these factors apply to every one of the positions. So we looked at things such as education, training, experience, judgment, contact, working conditions, and technology. So we looked at a bunch of different things. We asked questions, and we looked at the job factors. So these are the job factors. And then, once we were done looking at the job factors, we scored all of the questionnaires, and we came up with a classification plan. So in order to do the job evaluations, we had to look at all of the information that we received from the town, and we also did onsite interviews. So when we look at the job descriptions, the questionnaires, and meet with the employees, that completes our job evaluation process. And what I told the employees and what I'd like to share with you is that there's really three components to that analysis. The first component is the employee's perception of their work, his or her or their work. The second is the supervisor's perception of their work. And then the third is the consultant's review of everything, and we pull it all together. So not only does that require us to look at the job descriptions, the completed questionnaires, the supervisor comments, but we did come on site and interview at least one person with each job title in order for us to really learn how the work is done in Needham. So that was the piece of the job evaluation. Once we completed that work, we scored all of the questionnaires, and we established the classification plan. Initially, we looked at everything together, and then we pulled it apart into two classification plans, one for managers and nonrepresented, and then a second one for the union. The other thing that is important to know here is that sometimes through this study or through the job evaluation, jobs are reclassified. So that happened in this study. There are several proposed titles that we have recommended to be implemented at some point going forward. One of the other things we did was we streamlined some of the titles that you had, especially in the administrative support area, in order to look at what is being used in the market and then offer, you know, suggest those to be used in Needham. And then, oh, another point that's really important is with your Pay Equity Act in Massachusetts, this system allows you to be in compliance with that law. Because of the internal equity, you know, when we develop the classification plan, all of the positions that scored similarly are assigned to the same pay grades, and therefore it tells us that they should get paid the same. So the knowledge, skills, and ability needed to perform the work is similar. Therefore, the positions are in the same pay grade. Therefore, they should be paid the same. So it does comply with the spirit of that law. And so the classification plan that has been developed is in Table 1 and 1A of the report. So the managers and nonrepresented on the printed copy is on page 27, on page 30 of the PDF. And then the union follows right after that on page 30 of the printed report and 33 of the PDF. So you can look at those tables, and you can see all of the information that we have included in there. I just want to pull it up. We do have the position title that exists today, the recommended title, the new grade to which the position has been assigned, the JFA total, which is the total of our questionnaire, and then the skill range. And the skill range is the range of points that's assigned to each grade. So if you're looking at the managers and nonrepresented, if the town needed to classify a job in the future, the job came up with 670 points overall, it would be assigned to grade 12. So that's what that skill range means, excuse me. The next thing we did was we looked at communities that we thought would be comparable to Needham in order to request salary data. So we went through an analysis, and again, that's in Appendix B of the report, that looked at all of these factors. So as you can see, we have population and proximity, but the other six factors that are sandwiched in between those two are all financial factors. We get our information from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and we look at all of this information and then determine communities we believe are comparable. And the reason why we do that and why it's so heavily focused on financial factors is because if we're going to make a recommendation to you on pay ranges, we want to make sure that it's founded in ability to pay. So after we went through this analysis, we came up with the following communities to which we gathered information in order to make that salary comparative analysis. So you can see they range from Brookline and Burlington all the way down to Wellesley and Westwood. And then some of the asterisks that are there are the ones that responded to our requests for information. So we weren't successful in getting information from everywhere, but we did get a lot of information for the study, which was very helpful. One of the, there's a few points with regard to salary information. When we're looking at salary information, we prefer to use salary range data. And the reason for that is if we only have an actual salary, we don't know how long an incumbent has been in a position, nor do we know when the person was hired and under what the market conditions were at that point. So when we have salary range data, that's a better indicator of the value of the position in the market, which we had. The other thing was we collected the salary data in 2019, but that was the market at that time. So when we do a salary survey, it's a snapshot in time. You know, as you know, sometimes collective bargaining units don't settle right away. Sometimes the information might be a year behind. But if an employee chose to leave Needham to go to another community, they would go in at that pay range. So that, it's a snapshot in time. We look at the market. The information has been updated since that to the current FY '21. So it has all been updated, but you know, there's a process to do that, and so everything is current. But I just wanted to point out that when you do a salary survey, it's a snapshot in time. And if you are interested in looking at the detailed information, that is also in the report in Appendix C. So everything that we received is in the report. Sometimes we determine that some of the information is not comparable, and if that's the case, we will remove it. However, if we do do that, we copy the data on the very next page of the report for the position, you know, for the data we're questioning, and then we put edited behind the title, and we remove the information. And the reason for that is transparency in the event anyone has a question about why we did that. So on Tables 2 and 2A, you have your proposed compensation plan. So if you're looking at the PDF version of the report, it's on page 35 for the nonrepresented and 32 if you're looking at a printed copy and on page 38 for the represented employees and 35 if you're looking at the printed copy. So when you look at the proposed compensation plan, we have developed it at the 75th percentile for the town of Needham. And also, the tables that follow right behind the Tables 2 are Tables 3, and those are just the pay ranges. So if you're just interested in looking at the pay ranges assigned to the grades, they're on Table 3 for the managers and nonrepresented, page 37 of the printed version, 40 of the PDF, and for the represented employees, 38 of the printed version, 41 of the PDF. So we had conversations with the town, and we determined that the pay philosophy should be at the 75th percentile, which means that 25% of the communities pay more for the same position and 75% less, pay less. And because Needham is in the Boston metro area, we knew that that really was the level we needed to be at in order for the town to remain competitive. We've done multiple studies in Massachusetts, and you can see here, Foxborough, North Andover, and Weston were all calculated at the 75th percentile as well for their pay philosophy. So that's what we discuss, and that's what your salary ranges are based on. So when you look at the compensation plan, there are 15 grades. And for the, I'm going to do this for both the managers and nonrepresented and for the union employees. So the first tables that you have are for the managers and nonrepresented. We have 15 pay grades, and we break them out into pay bands essentially. And so you can see here, grades 1 through 4 are your administrative and technical positions. Grades 5 through 8 are your specialists in advanced technical. 9 through 11 are your assistant directors and supervisors, and then 12 through 15 are your directors and senior managers. And the reason why we do this is twofold. First is it allows us to isolate the information that we receive from the market so we can set pay levels that closely match the grades assigned to the different bands. And the other reason why is if I had a position in the administrative and technical band, and I wanted to go to a grade higher, say I was in grade 2 and I wanted to apply for a position in grade 4, you know, with some time in service and some training, I should be able to be a successful candidate for a job within the grade. However, if I wanted to go to the specialist in advanced technical band into a position in one of those grades, it most likely will require more time and service as well as additional education and training. So those are the two reasons why we set our classification plans up that way and compensation plans. The other point, two points that I want to make here is that when we are calculating the pay ranges, we look at two items. We look at gradation and range spread. So the first one is gradation, and all that means it's the difference between the starting pay from each grade. So for grades 1 through 4, there was a 7.5% gradation. And what that means is the starting pay for grade 2 is 7.5% higher than grade 1. Grade 3 is 7.5% higher than grade 2. So gradation by varying gradation, we can better match the market, and you can see that we did here. We had a 5% gradation between grades 5 through 11, and then we went up to a 10% gradation between grades 12 through 15. So again, that's a tool that we could use to really make sure that the ranges that we're recommending, you know, can get as close to the market as possible. And then the other item is the range spread, and what that is, is the difference between the starting pay for the range, the minimum pay up to the maximum, and grades 1 through 8 have a 35% spread, and grades 9 through 15 have a 40% spread. So the represented employees, the same methodology was used. We have three pay bands here. So there's no directors and senior managers assigned to the union. So we have the administrative and technical, the specialist in advanced technical, and the assistant directors and supervisors. The gradations here are a little bit different between grades 1 through 4, it's 10%, and then 5% for grades 5 through 11, which actually is the same as the managers and nonrepresented. But the range spreads are the same. Grades 1 through 8 have a 35% spread, and then 9 through 11 have a 40% spread. So implementing the system, there's more to it than this, but the general approach is for any employee whose current pay is below the minimum for the range, we recommend that their pay be brought up to the minimum so they're in the market. If anyone's pay is within the range, we recommend that they either go into an open range at their current pay or in the step plan, they go to the closest step without losing any money. And then if anyone's pay is above the maximum, we recommend that they be, the pay be frozen until the range catches up. So there's some strategies there as well. And then administering the system in the future is twofold, on the classification side and then on the compensation side. So on the classification side, if the town looks at the jobs every year, sees if there's any changes, adds any new jobs, abolishes titles that are no longer being used, then the classification plan will stay current. The town has all of the tools to maintain the plan, and I'm available for about a year or so if there's any questions for no additional fee. It's really important that the town understands how to use the system, and they do. They're very confident at it to make sure that you can maintain it going forward. And then on the compensation side, what we recommend is every year just talking to those comparable communities to see how they're adjusting their pay ranges. And if the town adjusts pay ranges similar to what's happening with those comparable communities, then the town will stay competitive with the market. Now, obviously, with collective bargaining, that's a whole different scenario, but at least for the managers and nonrepresented, that's a really good indicator of what the market's doing if you're continuing to talk to comparable communities. And that's my overview. So I am going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate that presentation. Thanks, Rachel and and Chuck. And Kate, of course. Are there any questions or comments? Matt?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you. Girl, this is a lot of information and to gather and quite comprehensive. And I give credit to Rachel, credit to Rachel and all town staff, Chuck, for this work and getting this done. Just a question as far as our budget as a town, and this is more, I guess, towards maybe Kate or Dave. And in factoring, it looks like the numbers are going to shift upwards in many instances. And are preparations for for reflecting those changes if we do adopt this plan moving forward? Is that a three, five-year plan to kind of catch up to make sure that the compensation is is where it should be, or is it going to be more quicker than that as far as implementing these changes?
I would say, Mr. Riley, that it it's a gradual process because we would be slotting people in. Typically, if the range maximum goes up, the employee may have more opportunity for the future, but it might take several years, in some cases, you know, seven, eight years in order to go. So depending on where the the employee is, it's a much more gradual implementation from a dollar perspective.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, just, oh, wait a minute. Hang on here. Yo, I'm on, that's good. The, just, this is a lot of information. That's, that's, that's something. Just to be clear, this is personnel under the direction of the town manager, is that right? Rachel is nodding, so that's good. So not school personnel. The, and not the uniform personnel at police and fire, but the non-uniform, like the administrative assistants in those departments are included, correct?
That's correct.
And then just had to ask this trivia question. The executive secretary of the finance committee.
That's, that's an interesting question. The position has typically been classified in the system, and we are, we will be making recommendations on that.
Okay, for for those that are interested in this sort of thing, that is the one position on the non-school side that does not answer to the town manager. So, okay, that's good. This is really a lot of material. Joel, and do you find that communities, once they have a plan like this with a little bit of diligence, are able to follow through and and stick with it?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And and the town has all of the tools to do that. And we've had multiple conversations, and I think they're, they're well prepared to to manage it going forward.
All right. That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Kate?
So I would just say, Mr. Chair, that over the past decades, the town has done classification and compensation schedules, but not since, you know, believe it or not, pre-B, in the 80s, did the town do a full, comprehensive study of all of these titles. And so this is really groundbreaking, and it's taken quite a while. The other major shift that it represents, and I think it's really interesting, is that every position is ranked between one and 15. And, you know, typically before, we had, you know, one through eight in one union and one through nine in the non-union. And, you know, we didn't, there wasn't an easy way for us to determine whether our pay equity was in compliance with state statute. And now, whether you work at the library or public works or town hall, if you're a seven, the pay should be close, closest possible to the same pay. There will be, you know, a little bit of changes depending on what department. So I think it's tremendous work, and I know I speak for Rachel and Chuck that we're so grateful for Joanne for her, her performing this for us because she brings a tremendous amount of credibility to the project and a lot of years of experience doing this kind of work.
Thank you, Kate. I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Marion, please.
So I was just wondering, and I I may have missed it in this. Do we have a sense of how many people we had who were literally sort of off the bottom of the scale and similarly on the top? I'm just curious about kind of how those numbers worked. And are there some, you know, the people who we are in fact directly working with because we found some inequities with the market?
Dave might be in the best position because he's done most of the implementation spreadsheets. Dave, can you?
There were, overall, there was approximately a half dozen positions which came in above what the study suggests the salary range should be. And on the lower end, there was approximately, approximately 12 positions across town that were under what they're suggesting is the minimum range. And of course, those would be some of the first things that we would tackle.
And and for those who are under the minimum and being the first that will tackle, does that mean they'll be tackled in the next year? Or how does that tackling worth? How long do we leave them out of sync with our new classification?
Relative to our non, non-union positions, that would be implemented upon the implementation of the plan, which is going to be, assuming the board agrees, July 1st, 2021. And then with the unionized personnel, those are all matters subject to collective bargaining.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
I have a question. How well do the employees accept these kinds of changes in your experience, Joel?
Well, usually, I mean, I I think, I think what Dave said is important. You know, sometimes there's outliers, and that's, it's a very small percentage of, it's under 15%. So that's good. So it's mixed, but most employees, I think, are are satisfied. But there are times when there are people that, you know, their job may be reclassified or that, you know, the market value of the job may have changed over the years, and maybe that might have an adverse effect on compensation. It doesn't mean people are going to lose money. It just might be that they might not make it as quickly. So sometimes there's people that aren't happy, but usually what I find is most, most people are satisfied with the results of the study.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
I would know, Mr. Chair, that the personnel board voted after presentation and then another further discussion to fully support the report and recommended to the board.
Well, that brings us to a motion. Is there a motion to adopt this report?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? The motion is contained in the agenda packet that is a public document. So people want to see that. It's a relatively short motion. I'll actually read it. "In accordance with section 20B of the town charter and upon recommendation of the town manager and the personnel board to adopt the classification and compensation report, subject to collective bargaining as appropriate." So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the, oh, Mr. Matthews?
Just, just to say again, it is a lot of, it's a substantial volume of work, but it gives us a good roadmap to work with. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any other comments? Then that brings us to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Barelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that that is adopted. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate your work. Thanks, Rachel and Chuck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very, very much.
You are.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Be well.
You too. Thank you.
So that brings us to the end of our stated agenda. We do have an executive session, but are there any announcements that should be made? Marion Cooley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do just want to announce that the Nwari Working Group does have a public hearing scheduled for next Monday evening at 6:00 PM, so Monday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. We are looking for feedback from the public on our interim draft report to town meeting, which reviews the work that Nwari has conducted so far, taking a preliminary look at a variety of town functions and divisions from the police to housing to the schools to staffing to boards and committees, as well as having developed our vision and guiding principles that we are asking town meeting to endorse. So we're anxious to hear from the public and looking forward to that session next Monday evening.
Thank you, Marion. We have one more item, which is an exception three for potential litigation and collective bargaining. I will note that the posted agenda was revised to include this executive session. The board did not have knowledge of the topic 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Discussing this matter is now necessary and cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. So the agenda was amended to reflect the new topic. So I would ask for a motion under exception three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the this public body, and I so declare, the board will not return to open session prior to adjourning. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? There is mo- motion made and seconded, Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Barelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Bullion in his last public vote. How do you vote, sir? You're exercising more power than you ever have, I can see.
I know that. I know that. It's like I can, I think we can like keep this going. I was, okay, aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I would like to close the public session with once more thanking our colleague, John Bullion, for 18 years of service to this town and to all of us individually.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, everybody.
So we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.